Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the December 5th meeting of the Quincy City Council Finance Committee. But if you would please draw the floor.
Council King. Council Law.
Present.
Council Ray.
Present.
Council Harris.
Present.
Council Hughes. Council Yang. Present. Council Pallochi.
Present.
Chairman Paul.
Present. In the forum, I'd like to read the open meeting law before we begin and thank everybody. I know it's an early start this evening. We've all had our day job and it's a quick transition, so I appreciate everyone's timely attendance here this evening. So the open meeting law is as follows. Pursuant to the open meeting law, any person may make an audio or visual video recording of the public meeting or may transmit this meeting through any medium. Attendees are therefore advised that such recordings and transmissions are being made whether perceived or unperceived by those present and are deemed acknowledged impermissible. So we have before the committee this evening council order 2016-266, which is a tax incremental financing agreement granted to communications. The information was distributed at the last city council meeting. And we have some of the folks who joined us at the last city council meeting here this evening to engage in dialogue. I would like to welcome to the podium Mr. Rand Karia, who is the chief operating officer and also founder of Granted to Communications. So welcome, Mr. Karia.
Thank you. Good evening. So I was hoping to just kind of give you a quick overview of the company to help you understand why we're here, what we're asking for, if you don't mind. A couple minutes on that. So Rand started in 2002 in Quincy. And what we do and how we make money while we're in business, we buy services from companies like Verizon and TTT. We discount them, add other services and software to our customers, and we resell that service. So if you were to drive down the road, drive by Chevron, Sunoco, Wendy's, go to the breakthrough shopping mall, Goodyear, Angel, Walgreens, Nordstrom, all of those stores, in the breakthrough shopping mall, at least half of the stores in the shopping mall use Granted for their phone lines and their video communications. And it's not just in the breakthrough shopping mall, but in every shopping mall in the entire country. So we provide 1,400,000 phone lines throughout the country. To do this, it's a highly competitive industry. There's competition. We actually compete with AT&amp;T, Verizon, as well as other companies that are similarly situated. And it's a labor-intensive business. It's very customer service-oriented. It's very high-touch with our customers and all companies like Walgreens, Walmart. They expect premium customer service. So because it's such a labor-intensive business, we pull our focus into it. And our competition frankly has cheaper labor costs. And they have cheaper labor costs because they're doing one of two things. They're either in the cheapest parts of the country hiring, you know, the cheapest labor that they can get. And mostly in the, you know, the deep south and, you know, Florida, different parts of the country, you know, they're getting significant incentives. Or they're offshore in the Philippines or India. Their labor cost is cheaper than ours. So we're paying a premium. But it's working for us and we've had great growth here. As you may have heard, we recently achieved a big milestone. We have 1,700 employees and now 140,000 employees. And, you know, we're able to get back to the community. Probably read that we're the most philanthropic corporation in the state. A long-standing civil community, we work for employees right here. And every week we have a different philanthropy with the team doing one or two. So we've had great success in wanting to expand the community. Of course, we do have offices throughout the country. We have a large office in Rhode Island, New York, Atlanta, and Florida. But we have intentions of hiring several hundred people in the next years. We're actively working on that right now. We have been solicited pretty heavily by other states to expand there. We would like to expand here in Massachusetts, in Quincy, Massachusetts, where we're founded. We've had great success. We've had the labor force that we have here has been fantastic. So to be here, we are paying premium. Not only is labor intensive, but the office is intensive. So, you know, the building cost is really up, especially being close to the team. You know, we have a building at 104, we have a building at 115, and a building that we're in the process of talking about times at Monteur, just a 200 yard walk away. So to make the math work and the numbers and the financial analysis of where to expand, we really want to expand in Quincy. We have requested some tax incentives. So if you don't mind, I'd like to light up our client's consultant who's helped us with these matters to talk more about the tax incentive that we're looking for.
Sure.
Would you be okay? We just got butchered.
Good evening. Maybe just to touch on a few things before we get into the actual TIF proposal. We should have all this material in your package. But to touch on a few other things from where Rand left off to give you a sense of Granted's impact to the community. Since 2014, Granted's payroll has increased from $79 million per year to $167 million a year here in Quincy. That's the Quincy payroll. So if you were to calculate the economic impact on that amount of payroll in terms of local dollars, along with its payments to local vendors, Massachusetts vendors, which for this year is estimated at $19.5 million. A little over, somewhere between the $400 to $500 million a year economic impact, depending on the type of trickle-down economics that you use in your economic impact stuff. Granted has a significant impact on our local community and their growth line continues. What Brandon mentioned in terms of job movements today, Granted has 1,283 jobs in Quincy. And they're committing through the TIF agreement and through working with the state office of Mass Office Business Development, they're committing to add another 250 jobs over the next five years. In terms of the TIF proposal and the TIF agreement that you have in front of you, when we first sat down with representatives of the mayor's office and the mayor to talk about the TIF, we were looking at the 61 Enterprise Drive property with a tax number based on the fiscal 2016 valuation. That valuation was $14,801,000. As you'll see in the TIF agreement, the current valuation, which changed last month after the property was certified, is now $20,907,600. So literally, the day we bought the building, it went up in value by almost $6 million, which in terms of tax dollars, that's a little over $180,000 a year in incremental taxes that Brandon will now be paying on that building. And that wore heavily on us as we sat down with the mayor's team to negotiate our TIF. And it's one of the reasons why we asked for a long-term TIF. And it's one of the reasons why we asked for a fairly aggressive TIF. Over the life of the TIF, Granted will be paying slightly over $15,700,000 for this property in terms of real property taxes. That's going to save Granted, based on our estimated values, it'll save Granted approximately $2 million over 20 years. So the value of the TIF to Granted is approximately $2 million. They're going to continue to pay $604,000 a year on that property for the next 20 years. It'll also go up based on the amount of growth that the community has every year. So it'll go up slightly every year. That number will increase from the $604,000 I'm estimating. Brandon mentioned the other two properties, which as you know are also under TIF. Well, those two properties, 100 Newport Avenue pays $403,000 per year real property taxes. And 150 Newport Avenue Extension pays $107,000 per year taxes. You probably also know that those two buildings do not have a personal property tax exemption. At the time we discussed the TIFs for those two buildings, we knew that we were making a significant investment in technology, both in the data center and the network operations center. So the two of them are $19 million. That's what was invested in those two properties. We knew that was a significant amount of personal property tax and we then asked for an exemption on that. So as a result, it is approximately another $160,000 per year in personal property taxes based on the personal property of 101 Newport Avenue or Newport Avenue Extension. We did ask for a personal property tax exemption on this property, on the 61 Enterprise Drive property, because the investment in that property is going to be in furniture pictures in some department. We're not going to put another data center in there. We're not going to put a network operations center in there because we have 101 150. So the real property tax benefit and personal property tax benefit for the TIF that we're requesting, the personal property tax benefit over the life of the TIF is approximately $670,000, depending on how those assets have depreciated in the early years. We calculated that based on what we're committed to invest in the building, which is $1.8 million in terms of personal property investment. We've also committed to making an investment to the Quincy School Community Partnership as part of this TIF agreement, similar to what we did in our prior TIF agreements. So we'd be happy to answer any questions that we have on the TIF agreement and the documentation that's in front of you.
Questions on the floor for Rand and Scott Houseall?
Thank you. How you doing?
Good evening.
How are you? I said this, I think it was two weeks ago, before on this, I think Granted is, you know, ace's in my book in terms of what they do for the community, what they do for the city. They're the kind of corporate partner that we want to encourage to be in the city. I do think this is an aggressive encouragement to have that corporate partner in the city, but I'm open-minded about it. I want to get to the value, which I think you hit on in your presentation. I don't want to confirm my understanding of what you said. There's a lot of numbers and I'm aware of how good it is. So you had said that the total amount of taxes that you project being paid over the TIF over 20 years is $15 million?
$15.7 million, yes.
Okay. And so the, and you said the savings that this TIF will provide will be $2 million.
Correct.
Okay. And how much, what's the price tag of the infrastructure improvements? Obviously not as much, because I think the building's been repaired.
Right. So maybe $1.8 million and I'll say furniture pictures and equipment and $2.5 million tenant crews.
That's, so 1.8 and 2.5, so about 4.5?
Personal property, the one that's attached to the building.
Right.
The 2.5 would be tenant crews.
Okay. So the 2.5 is the increase in, immediate increase in value?
Potentially. You know, how the assessor values are could be a little different.
It's not going to matter much for the next 10 years. I would assess it because you're not paying any taxes. You wouldn't under the debt.
That's right.
And when I say that I do think this is aggressive, just when I was reading, I, when I first got it, 100% in the first 10 years, kind of raised a red flag with me because I don't recall seeing anything as aggressive as that in the past. And I think in the seven or so years that I've been up here, I think we've only done two or three TIFs, maybe only two. And the other one was for Fox Rock, Granted, Atlantic Realty. So the mayor's office thankfully put together some of the other breakdowns of the TIFs and had Mr. Walker for that. So as I was able to flip through the other TIFs that we have existing, and there are, there are a tremendous number of them. It's really, you cannot, I don't know, you may not have seen these, but you really, it's like trying to compare apples to oranges because there are TIFs in here where, I'll throw one out here, it's $4.75 million for building improvements and equipment. New jobs is six. And it's a 20-year job. I think they're all 20-years, most of them are. There are others, $5 million building an infrastructure improvement, 75 new jobs. They're not always tied to the jobs, right? And I think my recollection was when Brandon was up here last. I don't have the date on that. It was within the last three years, I think.
Three years, yeah.
We were told that we were in a bit of competition, if you will, for the same, the labor cost that, you know, that they were looking, someone was making offers or outreach from one of those southern states. I forget, I forget where it was. And it was kind of, we want to stay in Quincy, but we need you to help us, you know, to do so. So it looks like, you know, so we did that. So it looks like we've done that. And now it's, the investment is expanding, which is great. That's what we want, we want you guys to do more stuff. But this is a far more aggressive TIF than Apple's, right? So what's the thinking behind it?
The thinking's twofold. Since those two TIFs, the first two TIFs, the 100 and 150 Newport Avenue Extension TIFs, we committed to 200 jobs, 100 for each building. We've added 346 in Quincy. Since that point in time, we've expanded elsewhere in the country. We've expanded in Georgia, we've expanded in Rhode Island, we've expanded in Florida. All three of those states have significant incentives to expand further. As Brandon pointed out, we want to expand here. The cost of our labor and the cost of our occupancy costs are significantly more than in one of those three other locations. We have the real estate in Rhode Island to add the 250 jobs that we're committing to you. We have the real estate to put on. It's a homegrown company. They would like to stay and grow here. To be competitive, we're trying to manage our occupancy costs. The way we structured the TIF, quite honestly, when we originally were looking at acquiring that property at a very significant premium, given its proximity to Granted's other two locations, the property taxes were significantly less. They were about $188,000 per year less based on the fiscal '16 valuation. It wasn't until we started negotiating the TIF that we learned where the property assessment was going to come in from fiscal '17. That prompted us to ask for a very aggressive TIF to manage that real property tax grant set at $600,000.
Okay, that makes sense. I bet, but you're kicking yourself a little bit that you didn't buy when Campanelli bought it before he made the improvements. Could have swooped in, bought the buildings, then got a TIF, made the improvements.
We would have liked to have done that too.
More money, right? Listen, like I said, I think you guys are one of the best companies in Quincy. I had the opportunity to get a tour from you, I think it was two years ago with Treasurer Grossman, when he came around, toured the facility, beautiful facility, got to see the data center, got to meet some of the employees, talked with the folks over there. And I just, I can't praise the company enough. It's what we want to have in Quincy. It's the type of company we want to encourage to be founded in Quincy, to develop in Quincy. And where the government can help and nurture a company to grow, we should do so. And we want you to be successful in Quincy and hopefully act as a magnet and bring other successful companies to Quincy. And then just lastly, as it relates to the TIF and comparing this TIF to other TIFs, between the two, this, and this, actually, this TIF alone guarantees more jobs than any other TIF the city has ever done. And I think that's important. For me, that's the most important thing. So it's perhaps the most aggressive TIF in terms of the 100% reduction for that length of a period and paying off its, pretty aggressive on the front end. I think it is reasonable when we're saying this is the most aggressive TIF. This is also the TIF that benefits perhaps the city in one of the most effective ways, which is providing jobs. And hopefully, you know, I don't know how many of your residents, of your employees are Quincy residents, but I know of at least a couple who have gained employment there and then moved to Quincy. I know, personal experience of folks who have reached out to me. So I think it's, all in all, I think it's a good, it's a good thing for the city to do. It's a good thing for the city as a whole to support this TIF. And even though it's a little bit more aggressive than other TIFs, I think the benefit is there. So I'll certainly support it. And I thank you for the information and getting that information.
I think I could answer your question. The Quincy Economic Target Area is made up of, I want to say eight other municipalities, including Quincy. There's 430 employees that live in that Economic Target Area. The Economic Target Area is how the state asked us to report it in their applications. So clearly sizable number of local residents that work at Granted.
And I would love to see, I don't know if there is one now or if it could be developed from it, some sort of partnership with the city of Quincy and the employment agencies that we have in Quincy, like workforce investment, or Verizon, is there something, something to add to that?
Well, no, we'd love, I mean, we spent a lot of money recruiting. So if there's a way to reduce the cost of recruiting too, we'd love to take advantage of.
Sure.
One of the agencies are out there that can help us with our recruiting, that'd be fantastic.
Sure. Well, thank you. I wish you the best of luck.
Sure. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Scott Houseall. Any further questions for the grantee and senior? I guess, you got it. I guess we close this portion, Council of All.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a couple of comments real quick. In your infancy stages, you guys were in network. Was it, were you guys network plus over on Copeland, up the street?
Yeah, before we started, Brandon, Rob and myself, and your folks.
Yes. The only reason why I know is just an employee there. And it was the old-fashioned local, long-distance DSL circuits. The old-fashioned boiler room style. I know it's the fastest signal in there, but you know that. Get on the telephone, work and just cold call. So, you know, I know you guys have come a long way and so, I want to thank you for that. I just wanted to get a couple notes from you guys that, you know, the money that you've invested into the community as well as the state that you got, Dana Farber Cancer Institute, you guys raised over $4 million this past year. I know Governor Dave and Anton Koep, a lot of other people, were involved with $5,000 per shade for Buzzkite, that's what you call it. Not only that, and Councilor Crossway Pallochi was talking about how you guys put that into the community. And I know that you guys know a couple of employees, or that you guys put national funds back into any type of fundraising that you're doing out there for the community. A lot of sports teams have taken advantage of that. And that's really important when we're looking at giving a tax break, a TIF to a company. What are you doing? Are you more of a taping type of company or are you giving back as well to the community? So for me, in a nutshell, I just wanted to give a couple of comments out to you guys that, you know, thank you for giving back to the community because that makes, for me and my point of view, a better chance of voting, I guess, for you guys. I wish you the best. I'm on board with your blessing on this. I encourage you guys to continue to do what you're doing. You're doing a great job in the community. I see Granted's communication is all over the place. I know you do your little field day, which we have across the street over in Port Haven. It's been a great event. People are very involved with the community, a lot of children. So I just want to come out here and say thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, Scott. The mayor, he wanted more than $5,000 to shave his head so that it'd only be like $15,000 for the mayor's.
Yeah, more valuable.
Thanks for your answer. Thank you.
Thank you so much. And we have actually the annual charity event that we do every year. We're looking to change that this year, you know, because it's more of just like free carnival everybody. So we're looking to change that to something that we can really give back, we need a lot of money raised at that. So we're soliciting ideas right now on how we can give back to the community instead of having the whole 1,470 teammates now show up at that and have to work pretty hard. Now we're looking for things like, instead of doing that, like a big work dedication, we build a park or contribute to something else. We haven't figured out what we want to do yet, but we're very open to ideas from the city and the council to accomplish that, to change that charity.
Thank you. Council, we know the council of course, but just a wider matter. You could pull those calls, Council of All, and make you go back and have our class. I think the city council would enjoy hearing that at Christmas party. Council of Forests.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You know, Brandon, you've captured a problem I do from eight employees to 1,700 where you are. You are exactly what these programs were really for, to keep companies of yours. I think that this cause around that maybe Council of All wasn't shaking that head in here and we shifted up with the challenge of, you know, I truly appreciate your commitment. Don't only buy the corporate company, what a good corporate citizen you are citywide, that your employees support good causes that they bring to you on a regular basis. And just what a reach that you have come as our, you know, as your employer, as your good corporate citizenship. So kudos to you. Thank you for investing in the city of Quincy and to back support you this evening.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Calso.
Thank you, Chairman Cal. I've got a question for you. I do want to reiterate that I'll say very briefly that you guys are a very commercial partner for the city. I'm looking forward to you guys experiencing a role over these years and become successful. So I wish you the best of luck on that. I just have a request for you. In this document or the proposal for the TIF, one of the items on basically that you will be submitting a game report on job creation every year. I'm wondering if I'm allowed to submit that report? You can also submit one to this, our shielded value of the equipment as appreciated all the time. I understand it's going to be for that 20-year lifetime of the TIF that your personal property is going to exempt. And of course, over that time of your time, I imagine some of your equipment will expire in that lifetime and you'll have to raise new equipment when it comes time to tax on that personal property again. So does it make interest of informing us and the administration along the way? If you can also just report on the depreciation value of your equipment that is being exempt at the time, that's great.
Great. Thank you, Chairman Cal.
You know, Council, we're going to identity motion through, but before I go forward on that, Mr. Karia, I just want to thank you for your time here this evening. As much as this is a great story in corporate America, it's also a great story about a organically grown company here in the great city of Quincy. So the Council of Forests is a point, Council of Forests is a point. This is the reason these programs were created and provided support for motion here. I would like to move through, positive recommendation.
Motion through, motion through. On there.
Hi.
We'll take the side committee out of the way. These guys will say, "Council, may I?" Thank you again, gentlemen. Thank you, Claire. This is part of the committee, the board of commissioners.
She's sick. I've heard of her. How's it going, guys? What are we doing? What are we working on?
Shamus?
Where's your dad's seat now?
Yeah?
No, this is nothing else. I can't peek in.
Is that part of it? Yeah? Oh, someone, someone. We got the boss. So I left that. It's usually just that.
I guess.
We do the.
I was just asking you to watch out.
Okay.
Pretty boring stuff. Boring. Someone's gonna do it. Come in, come in.
I already gave the names, so no one's gonna leave the ledge. Um, do you have a notebook for somebody to take? All right, this is gonna be, so it's a little messy.
All right, Brad. So it's not quite so much back and forth about opinions on what's going on, but take some, about where's the money going? This is what.
Good evening. We are here on the record for a public hearing on the tax rate. Uh, Madam President, you'll call the roll.
Here, here. Counselor.
Counselor.
President.
Counselor.
Present.
Counselor. Counselor. Counselor.
President.
Counselor.
I'm present.
Are you just on?
Present.
Thank you very much, Madam President. All right, this evening we have the assessor, um, Ms. Colleen Healy here this evening to present. And I know the presentation is up there for those of you who are watching. Thank you. Yes.
Is this going up here on your screen here or?
Um, I don't know. Okay, need to turn them on. I don't need to be flipped. I need to flip. Counselor, but, no. I didn't turn mine on either, so there you go. Um, very well. Okay, Ms. Healy.
Good evening, Madam President and members of the city council. Thank you for joining us here tonight. Before we begin the tax classification hearing, I would like to introduce to you the other members of the board, Christopher Rumi and John Holm, who are both here with me tonight. I would also like to thank the staff of the assessors office for their hard work throughout the year to make tonight's offer. Tonight, this meeting is held for the purpose of voting on the minimum residential factor. The question is whether all five classes of property will be taxed at the same or different rates. The assessed values have been already certified by the Department of Revenue and the budget approved back in hand. Tonight, members of the council must decide whether to tax all classes of property at their full and fair cash valuation share of the tax levy, which results in a single tax rate, or to reduce the share of the tax levy paid by the residential owners and shift those taxes to the commercial, industrial, and personal property taxpayers. This results in a split tax rate. The city of Quincy has had a split tax rate since 1984, and historically, this body has voted to ship to the highest available CIP ship. Assessors must classify all real property according to its use as of January 1st to the full classes: residential, open space, commercial, and industrial. Anything used as a residential dwelling or human habitation is taxed at the residential rate. Personal property is a separate category and is treated as a class for purposes of allocating the tax levy. Personal property is coded based on legal entity of the assessed owner. For example, an individual, a partnership, or corporation type, and it's not classified on use. Personal property does indeed receive the commercial tax rate. Assessors must gather and analyze property sales in order to assess each property. The sale prices of comparable properties that sold in close proximity to the assessment date are the primary indicators of property values in the municipality. So for fiscal year 2017, the values are determined by analyzing sales that took place during calendar year 2015. The residential burden has increased once again due to the sale price seen in the residential class and the market was driving the development also within this residential class. The largest increase was seen in the two-family, three-family, and apartment class codes. Sale prices not only indicate Quincy is a safe place to invest, but is a desirable place to live as sales have been going into bidding wars in the market. This chart represents the line between a family home in calendar year 2015, broken up by neighborhood. All of these sales charted met standards set by the Department of Revenue for an arms-length transaction. Contributing to the increase in value this year is a result of new growth. Listed are some of the major developments put on the tax roll for FY17. These projects listed are only partially completed and will add additional value in FY18. The city of Quincy has adopted Section 40, Chapter 653 of the Acts of 1990. And by adopting this section of the law, the assessment date changes from January 1st to June 30th for capturing new growth. To ease the tax burden on the developers, we've proposed a new construction on the tax roll with a preliminary bill. This means instead of making up a total tax risk pre-25 payments, the bill is spread along four payments. In addition to its benefits to the developer, this time also allows the assessors to gather the information about the property during its early phases of construction to ensure accurate taxation prior to the third quarter tax bill. We sent up a new construction form to all projects certified by MAM. We request a copy of their AIA document G702, which the developer must submit to the owner, and it shows how much money they have invested into the project. These are, um, some solid commercial new growth, which once again, it's what, you know, we discussed. Um, back in 2013, these three office buildings experienced high vacancy. These buildings have now been renovated and are leasing. This is a picture of 95% renovation. The value increase, um, among these three buildings is commercial new growth. This statistic is interesting as it points into perspective how large Quincy is with comparing other municipalities throughout the state on a per parcel basis. I'd just like to explain too that a parcel is any plot of land. Um, so it's good to, you know, look over, you know, this, this slide here to see, you know, how big Quincy is. The following two slides are terms. You will hear growth assessors and municipal finances presentation. The levy gives a modern revenue a community rate is from real and personal property taxes. The levy scaling is two and a half percent of the total value of all real personal property beaten to $20, $25 per thousand. The levy limit is a metric a community can levy in a given year, which is last year's levy plus two and a half plus new growth plus an override. An override is an permanent increase in the levy limit. Access levy capacity, the difference between the actual levy and the levy limit. CIPP is an acronym we will adhere to while my presentation, which does refer to commercial, industrial, and personal property classes. New growth, um, once again is an increase in assessed value as a result of renovations, improvement, and new construction in the prior calendar year. This chart summarizes the total value changes throughout each class of property. As you can see, the highest increases in the residential are personal property classes. The increase in the residential class is due to sale prices in the residential class and the market driving the development in residential class. Personal property, most of the increase was due to value through six accounts. See that comes out of National Grid, Mass Electric, Human Power, Verizon, Comcast, and OncoGas. These values are provided to us from the Department of Revenue by their, because they have that value. This chart further breaks down the increase within each class code. As noted previously, the highest increase we've seen in the two, three, and apartment class code has seen from sales in the market. The mixed use is up 33% as this represents West Chestnut, which is classified as a mixed use property and was added on the FY17 tax roll. This chart shows the percentage of values of residential and commercial each pool required to any shift. As noted in the chart, the percentage of value contributed by the residential class is growing each year. The average single-family home this year has a assessed value of $3979, overlapped to a single-family home of $3675. Once again, the single-family class increased 8.3 as seen through sales during calendar year 2015 of single-family homes. In addition to discussing the average single-family home, we further broke the information down by neighborhood to show what the median assessed value of each single family in each neighborhood. Chart shows the median assessed value of the eleven neighborhoods we do have here at this. If a residential factor of one was voted by this body, then all classes of property will be taxed at the same rate, and the city of Quincy will have a single tax rate of 16.7. This means that each class of property will gain full and fair cash valuation share of the levy. Once again, this means both residential and commercial will have the same tax rate. As stated earlier, the values have been certified by the Department of Revenue and the budget approved back in hand. The council of all today must vote on what this minimum residential factor will be. The chart represents the options allowed under the law, and historically, this body has voted to ship to the highest available CIP ship, resulting in the minimum residential factor. As noted in the chart, the MRF highlighted results in a residential rate of 1442 for the residential class of property and 2942 for the commercial. Does anyone have any questions?
We can actually. We can actually state questions until, um, later during the meeting when we, um, when we discuss it as a body. So, um, and I appreciate your presentation this evening. So, um, thank you very much.
You all got a booklet too. We had done the booklet as well, um, with the prior years and the power of the social media, but they're caught here.
Okay. Thank you very much. Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak? Uh, yes, of course. Hello. If you'd state your name and address for the record, we'd get it up. Thank you very much.
Okay. Um, my name is Ray Scottless.
Yes, Mr. Scottless. How are you?
Hi, Chris. Um, and I live in Quincy for almost 55 years. Um, so first of all, I want to thank you. I need to call you. Thank you. When we had the discussion that you actually brought that up at the council, I saw it in the paper. I said, "Good." And I know you're a pastor, but you still. Um, and what I'm talking about for everybody else to know is I asked if we couldn't have some sort of clause in a tax code that deals with owner-occupied residence. And by that, I mean, it can be a two-family house. If one, one of the families owns a house, it's owner-occupied. It's, as opposed to houses, two families, they can own by some company or some person that lives in another town. Um, and a lot of single-family houses are now owned by people that don't live here, and they rent them to somebody who then works rules. It becomes a business. They should be taxed at a business rent. There's no question. These people are using that as an instrument. When, when, and so they pay the same that I pay, and I'm not using my house. Isn't that a possibility to do that at the moment? Um, most of the cities in the public, Boston, they do this, including Boston, Kent, Somerville, Medford, Waller, um, Chelsea, they all do it, Brookline, um, they all have owner-occupied class. And I understand that somebody mentioned that to a mayor, and he said something to this architect, his quote in the paper, I don't know, but this is what he said. And this is a guy I voted for twice. He said, "If people can't afford the tax credit, they should move." So is that feeling about everybody in the council that people that can't afford their taxes should move? Does everybody feel that way or just the mayor?
I don't want to speak to the mayor or anyone else, but.
So you all remember that Kristen brought this up. Does anybody in council feel that it would be the idea that?
Thank you, Mr. Scottless. Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak? Anyone else?
Go ahead, Scott and Ed Wood in Quincy. Question. Am I the only one who finds it absurd that the city council is moving an open public meeting tonight on the 2018 property tax rates, and yet the public didn't know what the rates were going to be coming to tonight's meeting? After all, we both know that the mayor's office, surely do, weeks ago, wouldn't less than a nickel, what the 2018 property tax rates would have to be to fund the mayor's FY17 budget. This allows all of you surely, at least sometime last week, had some sense of something even closer as to what the rates were going to have to be. Even more absurd, however, is the underlying document masquerading as Marico's budget that is giving rise to whatever will be next year's property tax increases. Strip away the rambling, the budgets rambling and mixed use of PowerPoint introduction in this third section summary of the numbers noted in the second section. The mayor's budget is 57 pages of often very much less than filled pages. Brantian Wayman's budget, on the other hand, has several times more pages, as well as essentially there's much more detail per page, and as do essentially all other municipal budgets across the Commonwealth, from larger towns and cities. For that matter, my church's annual budget offers better detail as well as infinitely more clarity than the Marico's annual budgets. How sparse is the mayor's budget? How sparse is the mayor's budget? Well, the church committees conclude not only the number of people employed by the city, whose salaries make up by far the largest budget expense. Also troubling, nowhere does the mayor's budget notice past year's actual expenses, one of the most basic spending analytics. In other words, the mayor's so-called budget is virtually useless for the public to use whenever to discern where and how the tax money is being spent, much less if their money is being well-spent. By contrast, the school budget is a marvel of detail. Even better, the intricate spreadsheet by the vice superintendent and staff very quickly juggles plans for a new school year budget, once the mayor sets the annual appropriation to local schools. That and the school department can then monitor its expenditures, as well as all that invariably ends up finishing each fiscal year with a budget, as well as duly knowing where and what the money was spent on for the right specificity. Inexplicably, however, the mayor fails to include a link to the school budget. Then again, doing so would make it easier to see that the annual spending per student is failing to keep pace with inflation, whereas Koch administration's spending in all other areas has increased by roughly three times the rate of inflation since I came in office. Adding further insult injury each and every year, the mayor's representative at the city council asserts that the mayor's budget is his policy plan for the city. The only obvious policy one could imagine, however, is obfuscation, as the mayor's budgets are as transparent as painted on a photo. In short, Churey is an officer on upward, not equals. Even so, the only probable affidavit notwithstanding, I am still able to project that residential tax bills will likely go up by at least as much as last year's 6%, without words of as much as a key to leaning on 10% within the realm of possibility of buying taken with some very ill-reliance assets. Per my reading of this document, it looks like 8.76 is what the average increase for residential property tax bills in the coming year. Perhaps the biggest insult to taxpayers, however, is the following statement by a council member. Monday's meeting is more of an informational session, and a checkup on the city's finances than a tie with major decisions on the fiscal policy will happen. The city's fiscal year runs from July 1st to June 30th, so May and June are the key year times for decisions about the city's fiscal choices. If residents don't think the administration council are doing a good job, they should voice their concerns in particular during the next budgeting time. Person who said this is the only Republican in the city council, and yet she was the cherry to support two of the more liberal Democratic members of the council when they tried mostly vain to trim obvious fat from the mayor's porky budget last spring, much less than my and others' complaints last spring about the budget. At the same time, one cannot help but expect to find some dark amusement from the handling of excuses we voice when homeowners are getting yet another outsized tax increase come the new year, but not much in the way of enhanced local services in return for yet again suffering the recent treatment. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak?
How you doing, everyone? John O'Fale, just moved 14, Treslin, Wade, Quincy, Mass. Basically, on your point, it's a residential taxpayer exemption, and the city council, you guys can introduce that, as long as two of yous introduce that, we can have an exemption for people who have lived there their whole lives. So I don't think Mayor Koch is going to introduce a residential taxpayer exemption, but we have two bodies, and you have a second body. And there's a city council meeting tonight, so you guys could introduce that tonight. You only need two people to introduce it. Let's get a residential taxpayer exemption. And my second point is the commercial property in Quincy and the apartments. I think when you look at the values, they're not valued close to their true value. I look at the commercial buildings up at Quincy Center, and it's about $50, $200 a square foot. They're really, you know, there's a reason why the residential taxpayers keep paying more and more, because you keep raising the residential taxpayer assessed values, but the commercial values aren't going up. Quincy's a hot town, also what the businesses would want to come to Quincy, the Grand Telecommunications, that building they bought, the appreciation of that building in a couple of years goes to show how valuable property is. So those of us who are my two points, we need a residential taxpayer exemption, and it would be nice to have one tonight. Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else?
Hi. Who knew I'm quoting that in the book? So basically, I did some calculations on my past couple of years, it's on average is about 5.6%. So based on the gentleman voice, I just want to make you, you know, confirm the point is eight point something for the residential increase, is that correct? Because, you know, we go through the power very quickly, you know, this hard to digest of information there. So can someone confirm the information for us? And besides, okay, one more point, okay? You know, prior to this meeting, I heard something about, you know, incentive given to companies to lower them into Quincy to increase here. So, you know, if you talk about like if they're residential versus commercial, you know, we don't get any incentive, okay? We just make the tax, you know, to, you know, for doing more and things like that, okay? To maintain the beautiful structure. So I think online, okay, if you talk about eight point something, I know way back in 2008, okay, there's a 14% increase, okay? So, you know, just keep in mind what happened back then.
So, thank you. So the assessor is just going to come up and answer your question.
Yep.
So just like to note this time once again, that we as assessors, we follow Massachusetts' general law, Chapter 59, that the Department of Revenue, when each year we go to certify our values, we have to submit a series of reports. One of the reports that we do submit is a sales report. We can think of your DOR as a auditor, and we're submitting our sales report, we break everything out by class. So depending on the property that you are referencing, you would have to be looking for comparable properties that sold in calendar year 2005 to prove that the value put on the property, you know, was incorrect. There is no limit on where the values can increase from one year to the next. It's all dependent on what the market is doing, and the market is driving this increase each year in the residential class, especially among the single families, which seen on the presentation, increased 8.3%. Even higher increases among the two, threes, and the apartment class codes that increased anywhere from 10% to 12%. You know, keep in mind here, when we do have a market like this, which is driving this increase in this class, it does make life very difficult, you know, in our office. But like I said, we, you know, we follow the laws that work by the OR, and that's why we do have the event time period, that your time as a taxpayer, if you feel that value established for your property is incorrect, and we advise that you do what the board has to do when establishing this value. If you find comparable properties, you know, that did sell in calendar year 2015, and I advise you to do that. I have a problem if you'd like to come on in and go over things. This board definitely takes the opportunity to teach the taxpayers, and to leave them on the laws that we have to follow, I think that also helps everyone to understand, you know, where the value comes from.
Thank you. Thank you. We're also going to, as the mayor's representative, we are going to make the assessor's presentation this evening available online for folks who would like to take a deeper look at it, okay? And if you have any questions, as the assessor said, on your individual properties, we'll take, you know, meetings and calls. Anyone else wishing to speak? Yes.
Good evening, and thank you. My name is Ally Sean C., I live in 32 Essex Street, Albert's Farm. I have a question on the assessive, on the thing here. Is this 1,230 new units roughly that are being built now or finished, or how? Because I thought in the City of Quincy, roughly, not 1,230, but it was around 2,800 new units under construction that would be condos, apartments, single families altogether, with the exception of, don't count commercial, just counting residential, which we included the apartments as well.
No problem. In my, you know, in my, I was speaking earlier. Sorry. Sorry, not to interrupt, but we're not doing a question and answer right now, so that's a question I know that you have, and I know...
I can touch on that.
Yeah, she can talk to you, yes, offline, but this is not, the purpose of this is not for question and answer from the public, it's just public testimony. Do you know, you know what I'm saying? Yes.
I just didn't, I thought that there was a lot more units being built in the city than 1,230.
Yeah, we can, we can talk about that, that's sort of not the purpose of this particular hearing, but we can, you can talk about it offline, or we can ask, one of us can ask that question during the further presentation during the council meeting, but I appreciate the thought anyway. Anyone else wishing to speak? Alright, so I will call the public hearing closed at 7:20, 7:32.